Well, good morning everyone and welcome. We're very glad to have each and every one of you here this morning to participate in your county government. Kind of a great meeting this morning. At this time I will call the March 26th Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order and we're glad to have elected officials like Sheriff Gullidge and Jimmy Henson, City Councilman for Dallas. And I don't think I left anybody out, did I? Okay. We are very, let me ask Brian to bring the list forward. And also ask Robbie Finley, the Director of the Paulding County Fellowship of Christian Athletes, thank you Brian, to come forward. So honored to have you here Robbie, to bring us our invocation and to sing the Star Spangled Banner for us. He didn't hear that. And then lead us in the invocation. Stand if you're able, please.
See, we got this new crew in here. That means I got more to pray for than that. Y'all got Brian on this commission here, see. Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to come into your presence with this group of people, the way we are right now. Pray, Father, that you'll just bless this commission, give them wisdom, insight, discernment, Father, that the decisions they have to make day in and day out, Father, while they also have to run their own businesses and manage their personal lives and love on their families as well. So just pray, God, you'll bless them and guide them, give them the strength that they need to persevere as they do that and hopefully as they just continue to try and make Paulding a place where we want our grandkids to grow up and work and prosper as well too, Father, and that we can be a beacon to other counties in this state and maybe even across the nation as well. Just pray, God, that you'll guide them in that. Thank you for the people here that have things before them. Pray, God, you'll guide them as well and bless the businesses in this county and all the families likewise. And just thank you for all that you do and God may people look at Paulding County constantly and see us getting more and more in harmony and as somewhere that they want to live and do business. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his one, with liberty and justice for all. And I meant to thank God even more for what he's done in your life, Sandy. Praise to him for that. Thank you.
Amen. Thanks so much Robbie. The March 12th, 2019 work session minutes and the March 12th, 2019 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, I love the Paulding, their Positively Paulding segment and I haven't seen this one, so I'm looking forward to seeing it and let's watch it together.
I'm Steve Mapes. I'm the Public Information Officer for Paulding County Fire and Rescue. On December night, a 28-year-old man was sleeping and his fiance looked over and he was in cardiac arrest. She started CPR. Her mother was there. She called 911.
911, what's your emergency?
On the night of this call, I was working as a call taker. And what that means for us is that means I answer non-emergency and 911 calls. In this call, she provided me with the address. I verified it with her and very early on learned that he was not breathing. So what I did is I sent that for dispatch and then I worked on starting CPR with her.
Eight minutes later, Rescue 3 and Engine 3 arrived on the scene.
At the time of arriving, the rescue crew's grabbing at gear to go into the house and our engine crew is going in first without gear just to check and see what's going on.
Arrived inside the bedroom first. We did notice that the fiance was performing CPR on the patient. It was very effective CPR. That 911 dispatch actually was instructing her on how to do this CPR. That had played a vital role in this patient's survival.
More equipment came upstairs. We started getting them prepped, gaining set and put the AED on him, continuing to do CPR. And at that time, the AED said to shock him.
The first shock, somebody had felt a pulse. I remember radioing back in our dispatch saying there was a shock delivered and we had a pulse. And then I remember the AED telling them perform CPR again.
If no pulse, start CPR.
And continued doing CPR at that time. Then we had a cycle of no shock advised. Then we had another cycle of shock advised.
Shock advised.
Shocking him a second time, in which case he actually came back again. And we put him back on oxygen again, got him on a backboard quickly and got him into the ambulance to get him to the hospital. None of that probably would have meant much without dispatch coaching the fiance through chest compressions and maintaining chest compressions before we even got there.
Go to the American Heart Association website and you can look up local classes. They have classes for the public.
Everybody take CPR lessons, learn how to do it because it could be your husband, it could be your son, it could be your daughter. It could be anybody that you love. You could be the difference of them surviving or not.
I'd like to announce a town hall meeting that I called for March the 28th, which is just two days, two nights away. March 28th at 7:00 PM, it stars and strikes. Some or all the commissioners will be there in departments. The only thing we will not be talking about in any depth is the budget. We're going to have two additional town hall meetings in April and May and just talk about the budget. So look forward to that. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Lead Communications Officer Amber Aiken with the Paulding County E-911 Center. And her supervisor, Mr. David Mumford's going to lead us in this presentation.
I'm not really her supervisor, but I'll take credit for it. Stand up there. It's a privilege and honor to be able to present this to Amber this morning. And before I get started, I have a story to tell. Hopefully it won't get me in a lot of trouble with her. But back several years ago in the old 911 center, some of you have been in there, but about once a year, we would lose power and lose heat or lose air during the summertime. It inevitably occurred in July or August. And so this time it was in one of those months and it was like 110 degrees inside that room. We could not stop working. We still had 911 calls coming in. So we brought in these portable air conditioners and they reduced the temperature inside the building to a comfortable 98. But with all the equipment and stuff we have in there, the temperature just stays up. We dropped our dress code for the day and we told everybody to just come in and dress comfortably. So we were wearing shorts and tank tops, whatever we could withstand the heat. So when I come to work that day, I walk in and Amber has these really bright orange shorts on. And they were like orange reflective shorts and she called them her DOT shorts. So just for, just a little, that's kind of stuck in my head all these years that throughout all of this, we're still working in these 100-degree temperatures even though when we had to come in in shorts and tank tops to get our jobs done. But today we'll specifically talk about Amber's work over the last few months. She began her employment with Paulding County 911 in 2013 and then in 2017, she was promoted to Lead Communications Officer. And what that means is that she is an assistant shift supervisor and part of her responsibilities are training new communications officers and mentoring new communications officers and even helping with training with the senior officers on her shift. During a period of time from October 2018 to January 2019, we were short of supervisor on her shift. So during that time, she stepped up to the plate and she assumed the role of interim supervisor. So in addition to her training responsibilities, she was also actively leading the entire shift during that time period. She was also responsible for supervising a trainee who was on call-taking extension and she was also serving as a mentor to a new trainer during the same period. The trainee who she was actually helping through their extended training period said that she had really positive things to say about Amber and she said that she has a talent to be direct in the information that she provided and at the same time, she comes across as caring towards her trainer, our trainees. Many of the ways that she went about coaching her employees worked so well during that time period that she was acting supervisor, that she was asked to create a model that's going to be used as an agency-wide way for our supervisory staff to coach their employees in a more proactive manner. So even our senior supervisors sometimes struggle with the workloads, but even with her added responsibilities, Amber excelled and continues to excel. She displays an uncanny ability to manage her shift with efficiency, meeting deadlines and managing her workflows without compromise. She's an excellent, well-rounded employee and she continues to embody the spirit of our mission statement, which is keeping our community safe one call at a time. If you would, join me in thanking Amber for her work and her dedication.
While we're getting set up for a picture suitable for framing, the Public Safety Appreciation Award is awarded to Amber Aiken in recognition of outstanding service to our community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. Amber, thank you so much for your word. And if you didn't know, this is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month and we have a proclamation here to present to Ivy Capps, who's the Executive Director of the Paulding Child Advocacy Center. Ms. Ivy Capps, I didn't talk with you before the meeting, are you here? There she comes with her blue ribbon. While you're coming up to the front also Ivy, let me read this resolution, this proclamation, which says, "Whereas children are the embodiment of innocence and hope for the future, every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Sadly, child abuse is a reality, a problem we must relentlessly combat through awareness and action. Whereas every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many and that protecting our children is one of our highest priorities. It is vital that we all do our part to ensure that our youth are safe and given the opportunity to have happy childhoods. Whereas there are no excuses for child abuse and neglect, but there are many consequences, some of which last a lifetime. Therefore, it is critical that children's advocacy groups, community organizations, government groups, community organizations and others come together to form a network of support that can reach out to those in need. When abuse or neglect does occur, individual citizens have a duty to report the appropriate authorities. This month, we asked the citizens of Paulding County to join with the Paulding County Child Advocacy Center to fight child abuse. By raising awareness of this issue and standing up for the safety of our children, we can help prevent child abuse and allow our young ones to look forward to bright futures. Therefore, it is resolved that I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April of 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Paulding County and encourage the citizens to show that they care by committing themselves to fighting child abuse and neglect."
We appreciate the Commissioner and the Commission acknowledging April and Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. It's real important to us as a community, working together with the law enforcement and Child Protective Services and other agencies to make sure the children of Paulding County are safe and have a place to come and talk about things that they need to talk about. So we appreciate all the support and we are selling blue ribbon bows. We are painting Paulding blue and the Commission building is the first building in Paulding County now that has bows on all of the main doors. So we do appreciate your support in that area. And if you're interested in painting part of your area in Paulding blue, please give us a call and we'll make sure you get a ribbon. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Well, we're delighted to have some special guests with us from the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority, Executive Director Chris Tomlinson. I've known Chris for a couple of years and he's actually heading up this all metropolitan Atlanta area project and effort. So he's going to tell us where the Atlanta Transit Link is now and where we're going. Chris, thanks for being here.
Thank you Chairman Carmichael and members of the Commission. It's my pleasure to come out to Paulding County, tell you a little bit about this new state authority and just looking forward to working with Paulding County in the months and years to come on this initiative. And the computer's locked. So the, excuse me, the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority, it's a new state-level authority that's focused on what are we doing in the metro Atlanta, the greater metro Atlanta region in the area of looking at transit and what it means. And we're talking transit in all its forms. You have everything from what we call the traditional fixed route transit. A lot of people think about MARTA and things like that, but transit's broader than that. You know, I know Paulding County has a dollar ride service. It's really anything that a community may be looking at to move people en masse, be it through scheduled bus or train service, as well as on this on-demand transit. Are there things that we can be doing at the state level that can assist communities to understand what, if anything, transit may mean for them? This is a new state-level authority that was signed into law last year through House Bill 930. And what it did for the first time at the state level was create an entity and a board that's focused on specifically, again, what transit may mean for metro Atlanta. To try to have a representative look, this new entity has a very unique setup in terms of its board. It's a 16-member board, 15 voting members. The Commissioner and Department of Transportation, Mr. Russell McMurray, is a non-voting member. The other 15 voting members are comprised of one-third that are appointed at the state level, so five members appointed at the state. The Governor has one appointee. The Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker each have two appointees. Whoever the Governor appoints serves as the Chair of the Board. The Chair is a gentleman named Charlie Sutcliffe with Georgia Power. You see him in the upper-left corner. The remaining 10 positions are selected through a process of local caucuses that are made up of state reps, state senators, county commission chairs who touch one of 10 districts. We looked at a 13-county area, it's divided into 10 transit districts and they elect their board members. This is a very similar process, similar to the way that members of the State Transportation Board, GDOT's Board, are chosen. So what you have on the screen in front of you are the current 16 members of this board. And then the board member who represents Paulding County, it's a gentleman named Todd Versteg. He's a resident, actually in Cobb County, neighboring Cobb County, but he represents what we call the ATL District 4. And at any time, I'm more than happy to put him in contact directly with the Commission. And of course, as Chairman Carmichael mentioned, we go way back to my days at DOT, so you have a direct line of contact to the current Executive Director. That's a little bit about the background of the structure of the organization. And I would point out, as far as I know, that this is the only state-level entity, where again, two-thirds of the board membership are selected through a local process. That's a direct reflection on the fact that no matter what level of transit or transit activities are happening throughout metro Atlanta, a significant portion of that funding is coming through local sources. So in the case of even Paulding County with the dollar ride, you're able to access some federal funds, but there's money coming from your general budget to help support that service. The composition of this organization recognizes the fact that so much of what a county needs and how it's funded comes from local sources. So they want to make sure that the representation of this entity, even at the state level, had significant local input. But what is the ATL and what will it do? There's really two core activities or functions of the ATL. One has to do with regional transit planning. And so the ATL is charged with coming up with an overall regional transit plan. This will be a comprehensive plan that lists any transit projects that are going to receive or are going to be vying for either state or federal transit funds. So if there's a project happening anywhere within this 13-county region and the plan's to seek federal funding, it needs to be part of this regional transit plan. So we'll be creating this regional transit plan. I'll tell you a little bit more about that and trying to prioritize all those projects in the region into one comprehensive plan. But also be putting forth regional transit policies and standards. This is to help us take a uniform approach where it makes sense on some of these transit practices and policies because we think they'll give us a competitive advantage when we're competing on a national level for these federal funds. There is specific discussion in the bill around branding and there's been a lot of focus on that, especially around the city of Atlanta area, on the ATL logo you see at the bottom of the screen and where it's going to be used. For example, right now, on the MARTA system, they're now adding this logo to show that it's part of this comprehensive network. And we're also going to be putting forth an annual report and audit of the transit services that are happening throughout the entire region. Think of it as a place where you'll be able to see a report of the current state of transit, if you will, amongst metro Atlanta. The regional transit plan is going to have two primary components. We're going to list any projects that are looking at moving forward in a six-year window and then a long-term window of like a 20-year horizon. These time periods weren't just picked out of the blue, but they line up with federally required plans. One is called the TIP or the Transportation Improvement Program. And this is already a list that is put together by the Atlanta Regional Commission, which lists any projects that are planning to receive funding and move forward within a six-year horizon. So when it comes to anything that's dealing with transit, this plan would be reflective of things that are going to go into this federally required project and program list. It'll also include any projects that we consider regionally significant, meaning even regardless of the funding source, if it has a ripple effect throughout the region, you would be able to find those projects listed in the ATL's plans. And by the way, we are on track to produce the first regional transit plan before the end of calendar year 2019. Now, how does that relate though, again, back to maybe local priorities? One of the things the ATL will be doing is once we have this plan and we are identifying projects, we're hoping to be able to bring the influence of the state to help secure and make sure dollars are flown from the federal government into our region. One of the ways we would do that is through issuing letters of support that would go along with the grant applications. In the area of transit, especially when it comes to federal funding, there tends to be two pots of money. One, we call formula funds. These are funds that flow through for any existing transit services based on either how many passengers are served, how many miles are covered, et cetera. But the other pot of money at the federal level is what we call discretionary grants. These we have to compete for and we're competing not only on a local or regional basis, but on a national basis. We're hoping by taking this regional approach and bringing hopefully the influence of the Governor, members of Congressional delegation, we can increase the chances of bringing those dollars back into this region. This type of comprehensive approach, we think will give us a competitive edge against other parts of the country. So one component I talked about is the planning. The next is funding. House Bill 930 included a new provision for counties to consider for transit funding. It comes in the form of a new type of T-Splosh or transit-specific T-Splosh. This allows any of the 13 counties to consider doing a splosh for a list of transit-specific projects. And if there is such a list of projects, counties have the option of doing an up-to-1% sales tax for up to 30 years. I've had many people ask me, usually offline, but especially elected officials, who on earth would want to go in front of their community, their constituents, talking about a splosh for up to 30 years? I would say two things. One, the key words are up to, it doesn't have to be any specific length of time. And the same thing with the percentage. It could be size for a list of projects. It could be any increment below 1% or one penny in .05 cent increments. But the reason that this one allows for up to 30 years is unlike a traditional T-Splosh where normally you're looking at some type of capital project, building something, paying it off within a five-year period, that's the typical timeframe. This allows counties the option of looking at not only building whatever the project is, but providing a source for the ongoing operation and maintenance through that sales tax. So it's an option. It doesn't, I want to be clear, it doesn't require anyone to do something for 30 years or the 1%, but that was one of the reasons. It was to identify the fact that these projects have ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And normally with a traditional T-Splosh, once it's built, you're looking at other traditional forms of paying for that upkeep. This allows that same funding mechanism to be used on the operation and maintenance side. Also, and we're pretty far away from MARTA's territory, but this is fundamentally different than the way, say, MARTA's funding works, where those counties that join MARTA, that sales tax is pooled amongst all those counties. They have representation on that board and sort of decide where the money is needed most. This one is county-specific, even though most of what we're talking about is regional, if this type of T-Splosh is done, that money is assessed, collected, and legally must be spent within the borders of that county. It can't be spent outside of the borders of the county that was to put in place such a T-Splosh. Turning back to the planning process, and I already mentioned, our plan is to come up with the first regional transit plan before the end of calendar year 2019. So right now, what we're doing is we're coming up with what is the evaluation or the prioritization process that's going to lead to a listing and ranking of projects in the plan. So we're coming up with and developing that process. You can see the schedule. We've had a number of workshops with transit plan professionals from around the region and we'll be coming back in front of the ATL Board, one at the committee level early in May. And we're hoping them to adopt, again, not the plan, but just the process for developing the plan by late May of this year. From there, we're going to turn to working on pulling together an actual plan. So there'll be a call for projects, project sponsors who are interested in having a project listed on the plan. That call for projects will happen sometime this summer so that we can stay on track to produce the first plan by the end of this year. What the Board has done is adopted a set of governing principles that should guide the work of the staff in working on the plan and the prioritization. And they're looking at everything from economic development and land use to sustainability, equity, and also return on investment on these projects. One of the reasons the state created the ATL is it was in recognition of the fact that we're hearing from more and more when it comes to potential companies coming into the area, they're asking questions about transit and connectivity to workforce. This goes far beyond just expansion of existing transit networks. This goes far beyond just expansion of existing transit networks around Fulton, DeKalb, et cetera. But what are we doing to connect up the thriving workforces that we have here to other activity centers in and around our communities? And so from the economic development standpoint, that was, that and the return on investment, those were two sort of drivers coming from the Board and really from the state. We've had three Board meetings to date. I already tell you what's coming up in May, and really you just sort of really see an outline of the upcoming Board meetings for the rest of the year and when we're planning on adopting plans or doing the annual report. I would point out the line or the row that says August 8th. Another provision of House Bill 930 allows the ATL Board to submit a list of projects from anywhere throughout the region to the Governor and the General Assembly for them to consider the state issuing bond funds to help support or move those projects forward. These would be bonds where the repayment of those bonds would be at the state level. But every year by September 1st, the ATL can submit this list of projects for consideration. So the first time a project list would be submitted would be by September 1 of this year for the state to consider putting funding in in the FY '21 budget. You know, the FY '20 budget for us will start July 1 of this year, so it'd be for the following year's budget. But again, this is another way where the state can make some targeted investments to help move projects forward throughout the greater metro Atlanta region. Now, even though that Board is, I guess, diverse and representative, we recognize that 16 people are still not reaching a broad enough audience. So what we're going to do with the ATL is we plan to work with and through the Atlanta Regional Commission and other neighboring metropolitan planning organizations to really get the word out. By the time we bring stuff in front of the ATL Board, hopefully we've done our jobs, we've gotten local input from throughout the region. And what you see in front of you are two working groups that we're going to utilize to try to disseminate information further and are more detailed and local level. On the left is what we call the Transit Executives Working Group. These are entities that have what we call, again, fixed route service, meaning they put out schedules and they have regular scheduled service. Going beyond that, you see the Transit Operators Working Group, and you'll see Paulding County listed there. These are entities that have any type or form of transit in operation today. We're trying to utilize both these groups to bring at a more detailed level the day-to-day business that we're working at the ATL, because it doesn't do us any benefit to surprise anybody and certainly doesn't do us any benefit not to have gotten local input before we come back in front of the ATL Board. In addition to that, we're reaching out to the operators. And what I call your attention to on this slide is the first two rows are a lot of those fixed route operators that I mentioned. That last row is, for us, transit goes beyond just public transit or public transportation agencies. So we're having discussions with the Ubers and the Lyft, so the rideshare companies, as well as these scooters. I mean, if you think about how fast this area is changing, a year, if I was giving this presentation a year ago, we wouldn't even be thinking or talking about scooters. In two years ago, it wasn't even figment in anyone's imagination. This is not going to be a substitute for local communities figuring out, do they want these here, how are they going to regulate them? But it is a recognition of the fact that these things are popping up and some people are utilizing them. Do they play a role in helping move people from point A to point B? These are some of the things that we're going to be looking at. And then, just a couple, I guess, tale of the tape. We're trying to do our work here at the ATL, understand the potential needs of various counties within the region. Like I said, we're already familiar with Paulding County's demand response. These stats, actually, one of the first things we want to do is update them. I believe these are from 2014? Oh, these are up to date?
Correct.
Ah, okay, good. So we got them updated. A few days ago, they weren't up to date. But again, we're aware of the service that you have, and there's a significant number of trips. And of course, the express service run by the state. We have many Paulding County riders, and we're looking at how we leverage the state's existing transit services to better serve the needs of any of the counties that are utilizing it. So these are all things that will factor in. And of course, we're also spending time making sure we understand the demographics of any of the counties, because so much of this is about workforce and connectivity. So we're looking at all of this information. And then, lastly, we've been pulled to get some interesting statistics. So we have a profile of the citizens, but how are people getting to and from work? Like most of the metro Atlanta area, most people drive alone. They have a significant commute time coming from Paulding County. But when you look at the numbers on the far right of how many workers out here can rely on transit to get to and from work, it's not large numbers today. Now, some communities, they're perfectly fine with that. I want to be crystal clear on this. The ATL is not coming in and changing the status quo. There's no cost to any of the counties for being in the jurisdiction. This is not about state control. We want to take a ground-up approach to making sure that we identify whatever transit needs, if any there are, and they're reflective of the values and the desires of the counties. So nothing automatically changes. This is just another new avenue to either, and some new mechanisms to either pursue funding or hopefully bring the benefits of the state, bring in a focus to help attract the federal dollars to our communities. So enough talk for a while. I've already hit what's on this slide in terms of the upcoming priorities, but we're working on that regional transit planning process. We'll develop the first plan this year, and we'll be working on the creation of some regional policies that we think will help keep us our competitive edge from both the economic development standpoint and workforce development standpoint. But with that, thank you for the opportunity to come out here and talk. I will definitely leave cards, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, great report, Chris. I really appreciate it. I think the audience has got a lot of good information there. Are the meetings open to the public?
Absolutely. We hold our meetings. They're held in downtown Atlanta. They're open to the public. The information's on the ATL's website, atltransit.ga.gov, and we are just putting the finishing touches on the ability to go online and watch them streamed live, so you don't have to travel all the way into Atlanta to see them.
And you try to get around like this to the counties once a year, or what?
Hopefully, more often than that. Right now, we're working, and I have some of my staff here.
Please introduce some of them.
Oh, sure. I'll let them stand up. This is Scott Haggard. He's the head of our Government External Affairs. Jennifer LaRosa, also in our Government Affairs Group, and Michaela Carter in our Communications Group. And so it might seem like a big group to bring with us, but so much of this is about local contacts. Our Government External Affairs Team, if you can't reach me, you can reach them. And then communication is what it's all about. So everyone's traveling with me to get a feel and flavor, because what we're, every community is different. And so we want to make sure we understand the pulse of that. But yeah, trying to get around to every single one, trying to get to all 13 county commissions within the next about 30 days. I think this is number five, so eight more to go. Logging the miles.
Well, thank you. Y'all helped me thank Chris Thompson and his team.
Thank you so much.
Next is bid awards, and I'm going to ask Ms. Pollard to answer or help with the presentation of the approval of the chairman to enter into an agreement with Kelly Landscapes Management Incorporated for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in an amount of $168,615.40. The contract provides for finished mowing. It's called string trimming, edging, and litter pickup of approximately 66 acres, 10.5 of which is the median, and 54.44 acres of roadside shoulders on various county roads. Ms. Pollard.
Good morning. Most everything was in there, but we did receive four bids on March 8th. Kelly Landscaping was not the lowest bid, but we have, it was advertised as a local business enterprise, and as most everyone knows, that's an attempt to award contracts locally as much as we possibly can. So they met the requirements of being the second-low bid, as well as within 10% of the next bid, and so they have agreed to accept it in the amount of $168,615.40. So unless you have any questions, and George can be specific as far as what roadways are included.
I appreciate the backup material reading in the list of roads. Thank you for that.
Good morning. There is a significant amount of roads and intersections. The biggest ones in there are Bill Caruth Parkway, Seven Hills Connector. Those are the largest roads in there. Cedar Crest Road is in there, portions of it. Again, you know, we started this contract. This will be our fifth year. Kelly has done the work the last three years, and basically, we just want to maximize our investment when it comes to sod and landscaping to make everything look as good as possible. I think Kelly's done a fine job over the last few years. As you know, aesthetics are everything when it comes to the county. That's why we spend money on litter pickup. That's why we do cutting, along with safety, but also this type of mowing. I feel it's a good investment, and I recommend going forward with it. I can answer any specific questions if you want. Last year, Dave, we posted, I think, a list of project locations for the trimming, or the turf mowing on the website. We can do that again, I think, during last year's conversion from our old website to our new website. It got lost somewheres in cyberspace, so we can go forward and put that on again if you'd like.
Put that under DOT?
Yes, sir.
Please do that. Any questions? Thanks so much, George. We're honored again to have Mr. Eric Johnson here with Comprehensive Program Services to give us an update on the jail. So, Eric, you got the floor? Yeah, Brian Ackers in here. He'd love to have you go up to his office. You've got a great second-floor view of the jail and how it's coming along. And they have a lot of good candy up there, too.
Good morning, Commission Chairman. Thank you again for letting Comprehensive Program Services give you a jail update. I think things are going very well out there, considering all the rain and everything else. We'll get into some details. Lance Painter with Turner's here as well. So if you have any really detailed questions out there, I'll pull them up here. Again, a quick update. Jail website, pauldingjail.com, putting all pertinent information that we feel the public needs to see on that website. So let's get up to the project update with costs. So on the right, on the left side, you'll see the initial budget that we had and our update from today. One number really has changed, and that is the construction manager at risk. Back in November, November 13 specifically, we came to the Board of Commissioners with three significant issues that we're dealing with out there. One was rock, one was precast, and one was conformance set of drawings. We did change order number one to the tune of $923,012. That was approved. But let me back up real quick. When we came to you then, we felt the liability on all three issues at that meeting we reported would be $1,518,275. So working through all this stuff, we came to you with change order number one, which was the 9/23/012, which dealt with the conformance documents and the precast. So since then, we have been dealing with a lot of detail on the rock. Turner's been involved, Scott Green, the county, Bruce Coyle, NOVA Engineering. So through all that negotiation, change order number two, we're going to present to the county for execution, which will be $524,177. So if you add change order number one and number two, it comes in around $71,086 less than the number that we came to you with that we thought it was going to be in November at that Board of Commissioners meeting. So that's good news. And there was a lot of work, got a lot of detail, if anybody wants it, on dealing with the rock and hauling. It was a really concerted effort, and it worked out really well. So again, the rest of the numbers you see there, owner contingency, FF, and everything else has remained the same, including the $300,000 that we still are carrying for the county to purchase the outdoor lighting as opposed to doing George Power lease purchase. Next slide. What are some cost impacts that are still out there? As we've mentioned before, there was a burn pit, trash pit, exactly where we were putting the visitation center, and we're still dealing with that, and we're saying that's going to be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. We have NOVA on site. We're digging down, see if there's enough structural fill there. It's not really structural fill. There's enough there to where we can go and actually come up from there without having to dig down and take out all eight feet of what's there. So we're going down, trying to mitigate what the costs are. That's why the number fluctuates between 50,000 and 100,000. Exporting of excess soil to be kept on site, again, that's a little, we're dealing with a couple little things. Demucking mud out there. We'll talk about the schedule here in a minute, but we're still working through all those. That's a, no pun intended, that's a very fluid conversation we're having with the construction manager at risk. And then high-speed bifold doors at the Sallyport, that was something that was a requirement of the sheriff's office from the beginning, and through our evaluation of pricing and everything, for some reason or another, it was left off the GMP. So it's not a new request whatsoever. It's something that was in the program that we failed to get into the GMP. That is a very competitive number. It's the same folks that did the bifold doors at Douglas County Jail. Any quick questions on budget? I know I kind of went through that real quickly, and we, you know, I have a whole host of other numbers if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to get a breakdown of your rock studies and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
And the hauling, the rate that y'all was hauling and that and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
Just break that down, and then also see what kind of yardage you have in that pit for the substandard soil.
At the visitor's?
The size of the pit and how many yards.
At the visitor's center?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I'm getting older. I can't remember all that stuff. I got to write it down. Okay. Any other questions on budget? We have that very detailed for you. I can give you a sheet after this meeting if you'd like, too. So, okay, good. Progress. Precast panels, the LEC are complete. We had a couple of issues. Metromont's done a fantastic job. We had a little quality issue on a couple panels. They got right on it, and it looks great. CMU is in progress. Roofing and LEC is underway. The rest is done. Final slab on grade is poured. Thank goodness. We had a lot of bad weather, and if you're out there, even though you get those double Ts on there, water still gets through where the double Ts kind of come together. So it was kind of a mess under there, but, you know, Turner, again, we'll talk schedule. Really did a good job mitigating that. Rooftop units have been installed as support and housing. Steel cell installation is complete. Love to have a tour out there. That's a really, really, really good system that you have out there. State-of-the-art. And then overhead roughens continue. Those are the steel cells, as you see. That has a special coating on the inside that is impermeable, and it's all done in a perfect temperature control facility up in Toccoa, Georgia. So when they ship those all over the world... all over the world, actually. As you can see, the masonry going on. Precast panels, they look great. More pictures of a lot of roughing going on. All right, schedule update. So interior masonry should be done by this June, this summer. Interior build-out you see will be done by next September. Interior build-out of the housing by October, and the law enforcement this summer as well. So substantial completion, one twenty-seven twenty. Back at, in November, it was projected with all these issues we were dealing with. I think the number, and Lance can correct me, I think it was April twentieth, because there were so many unknowns. Working with them, even through all this rain, they've been able to pull all that stuff back, and right now we have a substantial completion date of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. So they've almost made up, collectively, the team has three months, and it's been a whole concerted effort with the county as well. Change order number two, you'll see, has the February twenty-eighth date, but this, right now, we're trending towards January twenty-seventh for substantial completion, which is great. And there's the elevation, and I'm opening it for any questions.
I'm very grateful y'all are that far ahead of schedule with all the bad weather we've had. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thanks so much, Eric.
Great. Hey, thank you very much.
Okay. Have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items today? We have two consent agenda items. Number one is adopt resolution nineteen dash zero seven, a resolution of Paulding County, Georgia, stating its support for a livables center initiative and/or community development assistance program application. Number two is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Georgia Power Company to donate permanent easement on Paulding County Board of Commissioners property located at the southeast corner of Thomas B. Murphy Drive and State Route sixty-one, Nathan Dean Boulevard. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of those two items to regular business?
Dave, I just have one request. Could you ask Ms. Lippman to give us a brief layman's explanation of item number one, please?
Yes, sir.
We'll be glad to do that. I know planners in our acronyms are infamous. Atlanta Regional Commission for several years has had a livable centers initiative program, and they've recently sort of merged that with their community development assistance program. I put "and/or" because the LCI program is switching to focus on transit, and I don't think our on-demand transit service qualifies us for that, so we're hoping to get a community development assistance program. And it would be to help fund a planning study, and my request is to look at, I like to think that the stars are aligned. It's not a perfect storm with Wellstar Hospital, the widening of Ninety-two, the Greystone Headquarters, the sewer expansion to get to those headquarters. And then even if you look at the Aviation Academy at the airport, there's some things I think in Paulding County we're missing. We don't have, if students at the Aviation Academy want to live in the county, there's very few apartments that are available for them to look at. So we're looking at this area. Maybe this area is where we'd like to focus for apartments, for office buildings, for there to be more primary care physicians adjacent to the hospital. Maybe this is the area. I have a feeling that someday in the future, Amazon will probably have a warehouse in every county, and they will know exactly what the residents of that county like, and they will stock that warehouse with that so they can get it to you in days or hours. So we're hoping to get a community development assistance program to help us look at that area, to decide, do we need new zoning districts? Do we need to reserve corners for special things? So that's, hopefully answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I read the consent agenda item, and then I read it again, and then I read it a couple more times, and I was, there's a lot of words in there that, and I looked at, and I appreciate, we have the backup house resolution, but for public information, I do appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number one is discuss action for the Board of Commissioners to advance release the July first, two thousand nineteen payment of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to the Paulding County Airport Authority to assist them with their financial obligations required in the Federal Aviation Administration grant assurances. And Mr. Baker's going to report, and we also have the airport CEO, Terry Tibbetts, in the audience, if any additional information is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, before you today, when Mr. Tibbetts was here a couple of meetings ago, he gave a report and mentioned that this was kind of on the horizon. This payment is a payment that's going to come due on January, July first of this year, and Mr. Tibbetts is requesting an early release of the payment pursuant to the two thousand fourteen IGA agreement, intergovernmental agreement, and this is to help the airport meet its financial obligations required under the FAA grant assurances. So this simply is just an advanced payment. Instead of releasing it on time on July first, it would be releasing it early, and that's what Mr. Tibbetts is requesting. And he is here if the board has any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I don't know that I have any questions for Mr. Tibbetts, but I do, we do need some discussion on the board here. What they're asking is an advanced payment, and it's been described as an advanced payment. That would imply that next year they would get one payment. When Mr. Tibbetts was here a couple meetings ago, I asked, what are you going to do July one when you need more money? And he said it would be up to us. His second request at that meeting was that we consider restructuring the intergovernmental agreement, or that we consider bringing them back in to the county as a department, at which point there would be no more payments, because there would be no more IGA, because it would be a department. I know we've had some initial conversations about that. Some of us have. I know there's been some, a little bit of talk about how that might work. We've got some issues, though, with trying to bring them back in, and I'm happy to look at every option to bring them back into the county as a department. I don't think it ever, that IGA should have ever happened in the first place. It should have been a department all along. But there are some legal implications, at least potential legal implications that we have to get through. We also have some potential issues with HR and equity and situations that we will have to resolve. So it's not a simple move to just bring them back in as a department. That said, I don't know that it's a safe assumption that by July first, that all of that's going to be worked out, and that they're going to be either with a new IGA or with a department. So I'm concerned about treating this as an early release of the payment. And my question for the board here is, do we, would we be better off instead considering this an extra payment? I know bill's got to be paid, and I'm not saying that they don't need to be paid. But if we release an early payment, the budget that Dave is working on with Tabitha to release for the chairman's budget, that line item is going to need to be reduced by half, and I don't think that we can responsibly go into the next budget cycle. At this point, looking at that number is half of what it is planned to be based on the payment schedule and the intergovernmental agreement. Any thoughts?
So you, you stating that it's just as an extra payment and still-
Yeah, I mean, it really, I see it needs to be, it needs to be seen as an extra payment. And I know this is getting maybe a little bit of semantics. The issue here is that the airport is looking to get some bills paid, and I understand that, and I'm not arguing that bills don't need to be paid. But we're going to, if we move forward and call this an early payment, then the next year's budget, the amount that's budgeted for that IGA in the next fiscal year is going to be half of what it would have been otherwise. And if we can get through all of that before July, then that's not an issue. I don't know that we will. So we may get to July, and then we have to come in and say, well, we're going to, we're going to front the January payment in July, and then try to keep working. And it just feels to me that we should continue to budget. We have a, we have an agreement that says we're going to pay so much per year. I think we need to leave the budget to continue paying that much per year until a new agreement is reached, and in that case, we can change the budget. We're a whole lot better off budgeting for the bigger number and adjusting for the smaller number than we are budgeting for the smaller number than adjusting up to the bigger number.
So if I may summarize, you would make a case toward this is a budget need, although it is the exact amount of one-half the budget, or one payment, since the payments go out twice a year, but you would do the one hundred and thirty-seven five, possibly through the evening vote tonight, and then you would leave the amount needed, two hundred and seventy-five thousand as part of the IGA as it is?
Yeah. So I'm not thrilled with the idea of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand unplanned going to the airport. I understand, again, I understand what needs to be done needs to be done. I think that if we say we're going to take, it's like, I see it as maybe getting an advance on your allowance. You want to go get the baseball cards this week, and so you get it, the next week you want more, and you have to keep moving it up. And at some point, you've got to say, okay, we're not, we're not doing this the right way. If we, if we say we're going to front the July first payment, I mean, I've asked Tabitha, she says that we can, we can do that. But formally, by the, what's written here, releasing that payment early would require us to cut next year's budget item in half. And that would be under an assumption that it's not going to matter in the end because we're moving forward to try to either restructure an IGA or bring them in as a department. But as I said, the legal and HR issues that complicate that move may not allow us to do that in as timely of a fashion as we would like, which means that there's going to be another payment due on July one. If they're, if we haven't, if we haven't restructured the IGA or brought them in as a department, Terry's going to be back here in June saying, hey, I need more money because I have more bills to pay. We need to continue to plan to pay as structured in the IGA, the contract that we have, and we need to continue to plan for that. Any overage, we need to, we need to handle that how we need to handle it, but I believe we need to continue to budget as laid out in that IGA. So what I'm talking about here is not necessarily a, do we do it or do we not do it? It's more of a how we do it, and if we do it this way, I think we're going to run into a budget issue for next fiscal year, and that was my concern. Does that clear it up?
I believe I understand you, Mr. Davis. Since this is a work session, I could ask Ms. Pollard if you have any comments on that, Tabitha.
I don't really have any comments. We're in the planning stages, so that's something that you could consider in planning in next year's budget.
Well, I tell you, I'd like to say something, and I've been through the financials of the airport, and just to let the public realize what's going on, it's not like Terry's out there overspending. There's a lot of legal fees and accounting fees that goes along with it. I know because of he's tied into the county, the, what's it called, because of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar with the grants, he has to do that extra audit and stuff like that. So I mean, that's like seventeen thousand dollars just by itself, and just in the last six months, sixty, almost sixty-three thousand dollars in legal fees. So it's not like he's out there just spending money left and right. He's basically just trying to keep the lights on. So I agree with Ron, so. But there again, I think being thrown out there, need to maybe get with Tabitha a little bit more on it. I mean, I agree with, I agree with Ron, so.
You have any other comments? Anyone else? All right. New business number two is discuss action to adopt resolution nineteen dash zero-eight, authorizing the executive, I'm sorry, authorizing the execution of professional development training expense reimbursement agreement for the fire department. Chief Pelfry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got some great things happening in the fire department, and we're wanting to help our employees out with EMT school. We're trying to get accredited by the state. We're about finished up with that, to be able to teach EMT school. A lot of these personnel can't afford to go outside the public schools to go to EMT school. It costs upwards five, six thousand dollars to do that. So we're going to plan on teaching it here free of charge for them. All they have to do is spend their time. One of the things that we wanted to do was do an agreement with them, an expense agreement, contract, saying that for a commitment, more or less, to where they'd have to sign the contract and have to stay employed for two years. If they leave within two years, they would have to reimburse the taxpayers for the class. And that's basically what it is. Mr. Phillips worked on the contract. He can speak to the legalities of it, but that's basically all this is in a short way. Be glad to answer any questions.
What level of interest has been shown?
Yes, there's been a big interest shown. Forty percent of our personnel do not have any kind of EMT certification, and these guys need that to advance in the department. That's part of their career path. We held some preliminary meetings, and we had over thirty that responded, came to our meetings that's wanting to take the class.
Joey, what percentage of medical calls, overall calls are medical?
Yeah, we, last year, we ran the numbers. Last year, we ran over fifteen thousand calls, and about seventy-five to eighty percent of those are medical or rescue calls. That was a good segue with the positively Paulding. That's basically the type of calls we're running, and they're increasing quite a bit. And it's hard to get an EMT certification for these guys. It's a big commitment, and when you're talking about taking money out of their pocket to be able to advance, it's hard on them. And we want to just make it easier on our employees, and of course, that does help the department as well as the citizens.
Now, I appreciate you being proactive in helping them to get these.
It's a team effort. We've had a lot of people been working on this. We've been trying to get this done for a couple of years.
Fantastic. Thank you. Number three is discuss action to approve the relocation of the Veterans Memorial from its present location on Watson Drive to a new location in Veterans Park, and authorize the funding in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. And Mr. Green, our operations manager, is going to present at least the first part, and then we have a couple of special guests.
Thank you. I do have some follow-up points to hit on, but I wanted to let you know this project was requested and sponsored by the American Legion Post one eleven. And for background purposes, I'd like to introduce them and then ask John Black to present a little bit on that before I talk. If you would stand, we've got John Black, Jerry Rochelle, and Bill Fleisch here with the American Legion. And John Black, who is the committee chairperson, is going to give you a little more background. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. As I say, Jerry Rochelle, he's our executive board member and a member of the committee for the relocation of the monument. Bill Fleisch, he is the current commander of the American Legion Post. I'm past commander, and several years ago, when I was commander of the post, following a meeting at the monument, a memorial, I think it was Memorial Day, a friend of mine came up to me and spoke about, this is not the place for this anymore. There had been a goal of mine since I first became involved in the politics at the American Legion Post. Me and that friend rode around that day and looked and talked, he's that guy with the gold star back there. We rode around and talked about, this was a good place at one time when the center of Dallas was located around the courthouse. It's not that way anymore. The best thing I can do is read you a letter, and this is following favorable resolve from y'all. It's not posted yet, and it won't be if we don't get a favorable resolve, but should we, we would like to present this letter, and we're asking for money. but should we, uh, we, we would like to present this letter and we're asking for money. The, uh, commission has been asked. Uh, that's how I got here. We, we're, we're asking to help us do this. And when I say help us do this, we want to help you do it also. So we're wanting to support, uh, your funding with what we can do. Uh, just for a little history and the letter, I'm gonna read the letter. And it's, uh, like I say, it'll be presented, providing, you know, providing a favorable resolve of this issue. Uh, to the citizens of Paulding County, the topic, relocation of Veterans Memorial from the Watson Drive location, the Veterans Park location in Paulding County Watson Complex. His history, 1994, American Legion Post 111 provided leadership for the construction of the Veterans Memorial. Financial support came from Paulding County citizens and the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. The Veterans Memorial was dedicated on June 1st, 1996, on county property, currently located on Watson Drive behind Georgia Highlands College. And funding, in order to relocate the Veterans Memorial from its current location of Veterans Park, funds got to be required. Uh, American Legion Post 111 is assuming lead in soliciting additional necessary funds from the citizens of Paulding County. We will contact various clubs, organizations, businesses, and, and we will provide labor if needed. Rationale for location, relocation of the Veterans Memorial, the Veterans Memorial Monument is a meaningful monument dedicated to the glory of God, in honor of those who served and in memory of those who died for their country in the cause of freedom. Eighty-nine names, including eight from World War I, 52 from World War II, nine from the Korean War, eight from the Vietnam War, and 12 from Iraq and Afghanistan wars. The current location has become less significant. With the construction of the Watson Complex, county officers and services relocated the Watson Complex in 2008 and Veterans Park was established. Except for Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, the Veterans Monument is rarely viewed. This significant monument needs to be visible to the residents of Paulding County daily as a place of honor for those who served and remember those who died in service of our country. Current location on Watson Drive is uncovered, has limited parking, is difficult to locate and to access, no restroom facilities, a cover for inclement weather, sufficient parking visibility, they are necessities. Veterans Park already has a formal pavilion that houses five-pointed star representing each branch of the military. The proposed site at Watson Complex will provide a more visible site for all ages of citizens of Paulding County. Paulding County citizens should be proud of and reminded often of the fact of the approximately 160,000 residents of Paulding County. There are approximately 10,000 veterans. Uh, this letter will also say how to donate checks be made payable to American Legion Post 111 with monument relocation indicated in the fourth section of the check. And checks will be mailed to American Legion Post 111, post office box, Dallas, Georgia 30132. All donations are tax deductible as the American Legion holds a 501(c)(19) designation. Uh, providing a favorable resolution from y'all, we just feel it's our hopes and prayers that y'all agree with us that this is important to not me, not the American Legion Post, not just the citizens, but everybody, including future generations, and to be a permanent place for this monument as we feel it should be. And I thank you for your time for listening.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple of other things I'd like to add. This is, it's a bit of a challenging project. This is 23-year-old monument and there are no plans that we can find. Uh, we do have, uh, experience, uh, both in staff and with the American Legion on sort of how it was put together. And we've got to work through this and make sure it's done, um, safely. Obviously, um, it's very important that we move it and not damage it. Um, the, the cost of that monument, monument to replace it is much more than the cost of this project. I don't even know what the cost would be. But we gotta take utmost care if this is approved to make sure it's done successfully. It would also be done in phases. Um, the very first thing we need to do is actually move the monument itself, then rebuild the, the plaza area around it. And we'll employ competent contractors to do that work with plenty of insurance. So if something does happen, it would delay, but we could, we could replace it, um, so that we're, we would not become responsible for its damage. Um, it, I think is a better plan, based on what they've proposed, is not try to preserve what it is there and then have a clone of it or another copy built on Veterans Park. We really want to take that history and that, that past effort of community involvement with the Legion and the commission and the citizens to build that monument, but to move it where probably is more fitting in the, in the Veterans Park and build on, build some history here. Um, it will be a, a community effort. Um, the American Legion, um, county departments will be involved in this to reduce the cost. And this, the group, American Legion is bringing us a, an offer to sponsor it through some donations. That is not a prerequisite that we're asking the commission to consider in exchange for having this work done. I think the commission is, is being asked to move the monument, um, within a reasonable cost to get it to this new location. The additions to that monument to replace like landscaping and the walkways and, and maybe make it better and enhance it is really what the, the additional volunteer effort and, and donations would be used for. And we would let the, um, American Legion head that effort. But anything they do, um, raise for that effort would be put into that work and it'd be documented. Um, so the commission would not be paid back for the, the $18,000 we're asking you to approve. It, their money and their contribution would be to make it better. And that would be the approach we, we would like, or we would recommend. Many, many groups ask of the commission and, um, sometimes they don't have anything to bring so much. And, and in this case, I'm, I'm happy to say they are sponsoring with both, uh, funding and with sweat equity and through other contributions. Um, it'll be in three parts, moving the monument, replacing the, the flatwork or the skirting around it. And then lastly, the sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, and, and, uh, some other things that can come later. We get the core project done. Um, we would hopefully have something to celebrate in two months from now, Memorial Day, uh, May 27th. Is that right? I think it's a Monday before a commission meeting. So that's, that, that would be the good news we'd want to celebrate if, if y'all approve that. I'm happy to, um, recommend approval and to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank all of you. Uh, this has been going on for a year, hasn't it, John, and the discussion and, um, to bring it to fruition. Very, very exciting for the county. Uh, anybody that uses Veterans Park, which is thousands of people, way more than, uh, whatever get up behind the old First National Bank building. Uh, so, you know, whether it's Ride for Wishes or other events that take place right around this Pentagon, uh, area, uh, there'll be a lot of people that get to see what that is and what it means. Any other comments?
Uh, just a quick question, maybe for Tabitha. It's not a lot of money we're talking about, but we do get to account for every penny. So where does this fit in the budget?
This would be a current year added to the current year budgeted expense. So it'll come as a budget amendment at the end of the year and it will be offset by any additional revenues that we've received throughout the year, hopefully. And if that's numbers not there, then it would come from your front balance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. New business number four is discuss action for the board of commissioners to approve the 2019 Paulding County Speed Detection Device Permit. List of roads, Paulding County, uh, number 02-28-19. Mr. Jones?
Um, by Georgia law, all roads eligible to operate speed detection devices have to have speed limits, um, supported by a traffic engineering study so locals can operate the, those speed detection devices. Um, the speeds have to be determined as safe and reasonable by the Georgia Department of Transportation. This, um, permit request, list of roads is for seven additional roads to add to our permit. Um, our studies are done. They basically look at the 85th percentile of speed, what speed the traffic is traveling at, the road characteristics, the pace speed, roadside development, parking and crash history. Um, the list of roads that you, we've submitted have been, uh, reviewed and approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Um, basically what we're asking y'all to do is approve this list of roads so we can return it to GDOC, which will then return it to the Georgia Department of Public Safety, um, for approval to add, so the Sheriff's Department can all operate radar on those roads.
Any questions? Another one for you, Mr. Jones. Number five is discuss action to approve a supplemental agreement in the amount of $45,050 with Atkins North America Incorporated for construction engineering with, uh, and inspection services for an additional 520 hours.
Yes, this is for inspection services for the Dallas Acworth Highway Bridge projects over Picketts Mill Creek and Possum Creek. Those projects are winding down. We actually had done some road work on the Picketts Bridge approaches last Friday, getting that paved, ready to open. Um, again, like I said, this is for construction engineering services, basically contract administration, inspection, materials testing, quality control on these projects, making sure that the county is getting what we're paying for from the contractors. Um, you know, this will take us through the end of June and, um, I don't anticipate we will have to come back for this again. I've had some discussions with the county operations manager and also Commissioner Stover, um, about this cost and possibly ways to, um, maybe lower this cost in the future.
Yes, there's a, a good bit of savings not having to use your own personnel?
Well, the, the thing is, you know, with construction engineering and inspection, you're, um, you're paying for a person who has the ability to basically manage a whole project. The person out there right now, he can pretty much do everything when it comes to CEI. So there's a cost involved in doing that. Um, I think you found out probably in the past, when you have projects and you don't have anybody inspecting for the county, you may not get exactly what you pay for. So to have a really good inspector, there's, there's a charge for that. Um, in the construction industry right now, specifically roadway, there is a shortage of good inspectors. Um, as you know, roadway costs, roadway prices for work has gone up. That's also affected the inspection part. So, um, like I said, I have some thoughts and I'd like to discuss it probably in the future with y'all about how we can possibly go forward in the future in somehow reducing the cost as much as we can. We're still gonna have to pay for CEI services if we want to get good quality projects, but I believe there are mechanisms that we can use to, uh, like I said, help improve the cost. Again, because obviously the more money we can save and put towards roadway projects itself versus inspection, the better off we are.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business item number six, discuss action to award the horizontal directional drilling of an eight-inch HDPE water main under Pumpkin Vine Creek at Mount Olivet Road to Benton, Georgia LLC, with a cost not to exceed $90,955.73. Ms. Lori Ashmore.
In November of 2018, um, after one of the many rain events that, that we were having in the fall, we had a pipe failure on a water line that crossed through the, the, um, streambed of Pumpkin Vine Creek. We have been working with two dead-end systems since then. Uh, we're feeding east of Pumpkin Vine Creek off of Highway 61 and west of Pumpkin Vine Creek off of 278 versus, so we've got two dead-end, we've got dead-end lines. Uh, we have a, we have been working on a, on a solution. It's a very challenging area, excuse me, uh, very steep banks, um, on either side of the creek. And our engineers really looked at, um, many ways of, of replacing that pipe to find the most cost-effective way to, to get that pipe replaced and restore that loop. Um, we have deter, we had determined that, uh, directional drilling of an HDPE line under the creek was our best method. We do have, we have already gotten, uh, right of entries on either side of, of the creek to be able to, to do the work necessary on the surface to get that line installed. Um, solicited some pricing of various methods and, um, Benton, Georgia was the, was our lowest pricing for that HDPE line. Um, and taking into account the rock that we anticipate encountering, um, we've got a, a quote on that to, of $90,955.73.
Any discussion questions?
What kind of timeframe would you start the process, the drilling?
I actually think that Daryl had told me that they're ready to begin.
Thank you, Lori. That's the conclusion of our regular business. Uh, we have need of executive session today for real estate and pending and potential litigation. Uh, there's, none of the public have signed up for non-agenda items. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for those two reasons.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Mr. Davis, or second?
Second.
Second. Mr. K. Caroll is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned executive session.